In Elementary School District Board of Education is hereby called to order. Will you all please stand and join us in the flag salute? There was no action taken in closed session this evening. And then prior to starting the meeting, just two safety notices. First is potentially if the power does go out, then we'll ask everybody to safely just leave the room. And then we'll have to postpone the meeting until probably, probably tomorrow night because we have action items that, that need to be addressed. So, so that being said, the other thing is because of that, and because we're, we want to make sure that those get handled on time, we've actually modified the schedule. So we're going to address those action items first. So then that way there's no issue with potentially, if the meeting does get stopped, hopefully we've addressed those, those items before we, before we move on. Sorry, just trying to catch my breath here. Next safety item that we just want to remind everybody, you know, we did post signs by the doors, but I just want to remind everyone that for the Sacramento County Health and Safety Codes that masks are required at these public meetings. So if you haven't had the opportunity to go get one, we would ask you nicely to please go get yourself a mask. So now we can move on to item D, board safety protocol. I'm sorry, board and meeting protocol, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Our board meeting protocol, this meeting is being recorded, the meeting is open to the public, and the meeting is also being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. Public comment, public comments, public comments are three minutes per agenda item, and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allotted for public comment, and regular board meetings shall be adjourned by 10:30 PM. We do have a change with our email, our written public comment. Our email public comments are now posted to our website where the agenda is posted. They will be posted prior to the beginning of our public meeting. We will not be reading aloud written public comment. We also tonight have opened up Zoom public comment. So our participants that are with us tonight via Zoom would be able to raise their hand or put in the chat box if they would like to speak tonight for public comment. An email public comment is limited to 450 words. We do have two comments that are posted on our website that we did receive. In-person public comments, please complete a public comment form indicating the item you wish to address and give it to the board meeting assistant, Ms. Bach. Individual speakers shall be allowed three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. Board vote and connectivity for action items, the motion will be followed by a roll call vote. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed five minutes before reconvening.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. We will now move on to item E, new business. And this is the annual organization of the board election of officers. So would you like to facilitate that?
Sorry, thank you. Well, Mr. Silva, I thank you for serving as our president for this last year. I think for all of our board members, especially the, the board president, it's been a very different and difficult time to be a board member, probably the most difficult time in history of ever being on the board and especially as the board president who facilitates and, and runs our meetings. Mr. Silva, you've done an excellent job over the last year running our meetings and keeping us on, on task, keeping our, our public, being, doing a great job listening to our public, but at the same time, making sure we get our business done. So I, I know you can serve as president for one more year. I'm not sure if any of our other board members have an interest in serving in, as president or not.
I do not, but I do have a motion, which is, can I speak? It's Tom, you've done great. I feel like you've heard the speech because I think it was a speech you gave to me about two years ago. You know what it's going to be.
Yeah, right before the pandemic, I believe.
Yes, and I will say, you know, serving those two years, coming off of a difficult time in, back into a difficult time. And, but you've done great. You have been a fantastic leader, I, per, my personal opinion, throughout this whole thing this past year. And, you know, if, I don't know if anyone else agrees or disagrees, but if you're willing to take it on for one more year and keep leading us, I would make that motion for you to continue to lead us.
Thank you, and I appreciate that.
Unless anyone else expresses a desire. Wes, you've done, I know you've done your time.
Okay. Well, first and foremost, yeah, I'm, I'm more than willing to, you know, to carry on another year as president because I understand that, you know, this is a very challenging position at this time. You know, we've made a lot of progress in the last two years dealing with this. And I think just helping to maintain the continuity, you know, there's a certain, you know, there's something to be said for that. So, so first of all, I mean, I appreciate the confidence that all of you have shown in me. That's, you know, that means a lot. But yeah, unless, unless anybody is, is really wanting to go ahead and, and step up and take on the challenge, then I can tell you that yes, I'm more than willing to go ahead and do this for another year. So.
Well, being a new board member, I'm just grateful that, you know, you're willing to step up and do this another year.
Well, thank you. So what do we do next?
Do we have a motion?
Would the board like to make one motion, select the officers in one motion?
So we can, we can go through the rest of the, mm-hmm. So a vice president, yes.
I have one where this is it for me after this. So I'll, I'll be VP. If no, I mean, if, if you want to, are you, anyone, do you want, no, no, thank you.
No, I'm good with that.
You're, you're good with that? Okay. I'll end my final year. Okay. I'm okay with that.
Well, I concur with that. Because obviously then if I can't be here, you know, then, then I know that you, you know, you have the experience to continue on and run these meetings. So I think that's probably, you know, an excellent choice at this time. So, yeah, I fully agree with that. All right, that's two down. Clerk? Any thoughts on clerk? Who wants to be clerk? I think. Which she absolutely is. She absolutely is.
I'm fine keeping as clerk.
Is we all okay with that too? Yeah. This board gets along so well. Okay.
So we would need a new election of a board representative because that's currently Grace Mawson. And so if Grace moves into vice president, is that correct? We would need a new board representative?
That's fine, unless, of course, you didn't blank that. You're good. Okay, yeah.
Any questions like I was after presidency, just, I'm just gonna go.
We'd all like to see Casey then be the, the representative, board representative.
Okay, so do we need to vote on that, Ms. Bach?
A motion from Grace. Did someone second that?
I second that.
Who seconded? I'm sorry. Oh, Trace. Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Mawson to approve item number 212255. Election of President Thomas Silva, election of Vice President Grace Mawson, election of clerk Tracy Skinner, election of Board Representative Casey Raboy, member Wesley Kegel. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Wesley Kegel?
Hi.
Casey Raboy?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Let's move on to item 212.256, and that is Board of Trustees Committee Member Reorganization for 2022. So are there any of these committees that any of you just have a burning desire to be on? You all okay with the status quo? How do you feel about that? Because before we start, I will say, like, I really do enjoy being on the JPA, and I really feel like I've kind of been on it to a point. It's, it's really kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of just riding that horse out to the finish at this point. We've, we've made really a lot of the major decisions. So I'm really comfortable with being on it just because of my, my historical knowledge of the process. So, so I do prefer to be on that one, but obviously if somebody else wants to do that or wants to be a second, you're more than welcome. But that's, that's just one of my preferences. I don't know, is there any other, any of you have preferences like cast or anything that you really want to be a part of?
I, I'm already on cast and I like to stay on cast if we ever have meetings. I do miss those meetings. I'll stay on the JPA with you, Tom.
Okay. So that works out too. And then Grace, are you still okay with being an alternate?
Yeah, because I do have the history. I've been on the JPA on an offer.
Okay. And then Casey, are you okay with being the alternate for cast or is that still work for you? Okay. So those two seem to be fine. Transportation Committee. I know that one's always challenging because it's usually like on a Thursday morning at 10:00 AM, which is kind of difficult for any of us to make that meeting. But it is super important, the issues that the transportation covers. So it's, it's best if we can have some representation. Is that, is, for, for either of you, is it just impossible to make those meetings or is that kind of a challenge or?
I've made it to most of them, I think. They're not very often. They're only every couple of months.
Two or three months or something. Yeah. Okay.
So, you know, there is always that chance I might be working, but thus far it's been okay.
Okay. So then, so are you okay then with continuing that position too? How about you, Wes?
I'm easy working when they have those meetings and I work at stop.
I can do that one.
So then Tracy, you want to be the, the other primary? Okay. And then Wes, do you want to be the, the alternate? Or I can still be alternate because there's times when I might have a Thursday morning off. So I'm okay with him. Or I'll tell you what, if you want to stay the, well, I'm, I guess I'm already the alternate on this, that's fine. Okay. So then again, for transportation, Casey, Tracy, and then myself as the alternate. And then moving on to the SE, SBA. Is there only a requirement to have one member? Is that why we, we've only historically had one person in that position or? Because, I mean, typically I think we all get invites to those meetings anyway, right?
I think so. I'd have to defer to Kawhi on this one for, is that, we only need to have one board member for the CSBA?
Historically, we've only had one board member. However, all board members are invited to these events. They happen twice a year.
Okay. So just having one person in that position, that's just the dedicated person, then the rest of us opt to go to those meetings we can't. Okay. So then again, Tracy, are, are you comfortable with it? Did they even have in-person meetings or were they Zoom meetings this last year? They didn't have any, too bad because they, they usually have good food there.
I don't know anything yet about March. Might be in person, yeah.
Because, yeah, because those are, they typically have it, the Scully offices. So it's really nice just to, just, just to see, yeah, just to see what's there. Okay. Everybody comfortable with that? Okay. And then Board Policy Committee. Again, so my question is, is that, I mean, a committee of one? How does that work? I mean.
I get sent policy to read before it goes to the board.
Okay.
That's kind of how it's worked out. We haven't really had meetings.
We haven't had meetings. Whoever serves in this role would, we would typically send the policies ahead of time.
So they just review them on their own and then they give you feedback and then it comes before the board. Okay. All right. I was just curious how that worked. So, but, so you're fine with that, Grace?
That's fine. No one else, unless it has a burning desire.
Well, I think mostly you have the experience. I think, you know, your longevity on the board, I think says a lot about your ability to, to look at these policies and understand which ones need to be changed and when and review them. So I think you're a good fit for that. Okay. So then I guess we're all comfortable with the, the only real change then is under transportation is I'm crossing out Wes and Penciling and Tracy, and everything else remains the same. So you got that, Kawhi? Okay. So then any other questions, comments on that issue? Okay. Then if not, do I have a motion to approve item 212.256?
I'll make the motion to approve item 212.256.
Thank you, Tracy. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212256, seconded by Casey Raboy to approve Board Committee Member Reorganization for 2022. Cast members Grace Mawson, Wesley Kegel, alternate Casey Raboy, Gulf Schools JPA, Thomas Silva, Tracy Skinner, alternate Grace Mawson, Transportation Committee Casey Raboy and Tracy Skinner, alternate Thomas Silva, and Sacramento County School Boards Association Member Tracy Skinner, Board Policy Committee Grace Mawson. The motion passes unanimously. Oh, excuse me. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Wesley Kegel? Grace Mawson?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. As we mentioned previously, due to safety requirements, we're going to move item F reports to the end of the meeting so that we can get through the rest of the action items. So those of you that are following the, the agenda and paying attention, we will get to item F reports, but not until after we've concluded all the, the action items. So we need to move on to item 212.257, the Consent Calendar. Superintendent, is there anything, anything we need to be aware of, any, any big retirements?
No big retirements, no donations this month.
Board members, any questions or comments on the, the consent calendar? Okay. Well, then if not, do I have a motion to approve item 212.257?
I make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number 212257, seconded by Grace Mawson. Tom Silva?
Hi.
Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Casey Raboy?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 212.259, Board Consideration of Approval of Educator Effectiveness Block Grant Funds 2021.
Thank you. So last month, we had a public hearing on November 17th, and Donna Whitlock presented to you the plan of how we would spend the educator effectiveness, effectiveness block grant funds. We have approximately $992,000 in this plan. Most of these funds need to be spent on professional development for all staff, teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, classified staff. And so the first step of this process was to bring the plan to the public hearing, and now we are asking for board approval of this plan. We have until September of 2026 to spend almost $1 million in educator effectiveness funds. If the board has any questions on the, the plan, the plan is included for you as well. We have not made any changes since the public hearing.
So any questions or comments on that? I know we all looked at this last one. So we're all good with that? Okay. If that's the case, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.259? Okay, I'll move to approve item 212.259. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Wes.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 212259, seconded by Wesley Kegel. Tracy Skinner?
Hi.
Grace Mawson?
Hi.
Casey Raboy?
Hi.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
All right, now we'll move on to item 212.260, and that is Board Consideration of Approval of the GJUESD 2021-2022 First Interim Budget Report.
So it'd be me. In my section, when you turn the first page, you'll see your PowerPoint is next. And then Kawhi, you have the PowerPoint up on this.
You know, I think the PowerPoint didn't get in the packet, so I think the PowerPoint is right here in, in your table. Yeah.
So we can start on slide two, Kawhi. I've passed the title page. So the first page is just to reiterate what the COLAs are for the next three years. As of right now, we've got 2122, as discussed before in other meetings, we have the 5.07 LCFF COLA and the 1.7 statutory COLA. As of right now, the two out-year COLAs are 2.48 and 3.11. As we know, the governor's budget will happen in January, and so we could see new COLA rates for the out-years. And if that happens, we'll recalculate everything for second interim for the March board meeting. The next slide. So this one shows the district's enrollment. And as discussed at other board meetings in the past, you can see that the district has been in declining enrollment for, for quite some time. Gone from 3,500 to 33. Now we're staying steady at 33. I think the last enrollment that came out was about 3,320, but 3,314 was what was used for the first interim calc that we knew at the time. And so this does not take into account any additional enrollment we may see next year for TK. Next slide. The next slide just shows you historical pers and stirs rates. The light green is stirs and the dark green is pers. As you can see from the, the climbing graph that employer rates for retirement benefits just keep going up every year. We did have that slight reprieve with the bail, the buyout from the governor a few years ago, but it's just continuing to go, go up and, and. Next slide. This is a graphical representation of the general fund revenue. I want to just point out that there's about an equal amount of 12 million in one-time revenues as well as one-time expenditures in the budget right now, all of the new one-time dollars. And so total district revenue is 58 million. And of that, LCFF is still the biggest chunk. It's 35 million. As we've talked about, and you may have heard throughout the chatter, is the ADA cliff that's happening next year. Everyone is going to, who's in declining enrollment is going to take the hit next year because they've been able to be funded on prior year ADAs through COVID and things like that. And so just to point out that right now projected that there'll be about a $2.4 million decline in LCFF for, for our estimated cliff right now. For 22, 23. So we get one more year of reprieve funded on hold harmless of prior year ADA, and then next year will be funded. It's always prior or greater of prior year or current year. So that's always the statute. It's just that now everyone really started having that decline and didn't really take a hit, and now it's coming, kind of thing. Next slide. This is the projected expenditures for general fund. Again, I point out that we do have 12, about 12 million in one-time pandemic response expenditures that we can spend this year, next year. There's, we have about three years left that we can spend things. Just to point out, salary and benefits is still the biggest chunk. And we have some planned capital outlay, hopefully with the S or $3. And that's why you'll notice if you go back in to previous presentations, you may notice capital outlay is a little larger than it usually is. And that's why, just one-time expenditure with S or shade structures. There's a couple of other things that they're wanting to do. And next slide. So this is the general fund unrestricted reserve levels. Reserve levels in a lot of districts went up the last couple of years with savings from COVID, one-time money that could be spent instead of general fund and things like that. And so as the one-time funds are, are spent up though, I just want to point out that those expenditures will go back to the unrestricted. And so you'll see as those one-time dollars get spent in the next couple of years, and you move, you know, you move expenses back to unrestricted, that reserve is going to start to chip away a little bit. To tie into that, when you look at your NYPD and your packet and review your information, you'll notice that we are starting to deficit spend because of the loss in LCFF revenue. When you have that kind of loss, it's hard to make up. You will eventually have to do budgetary, you know, expense reductions to help balance that out. But right now, that's, it's very preliminary. And so that'll be some discussions that'll happen earlier in spring, layoff window, those types of things. We get the new COLAs in January, so things will start to solidify in second interim. We'll have a better picture than we do right now. Next slide. This is just to touch on a few additional revenue and expenditure changes that have happened since the last time you saw a budget. So we've gotten the new Expanded Learning Opportunity Program, not to be confused with the grant that's COVID-related. This is 1.1 million for after-school and summer school enrichment. And Jennifer Coyer was here last time talking about the different things that she already is doing with ACES and things like that. So this is additional funds to help make that more robust. And then as Donna talked about, the educate, and Lois, the educator effectiveness grant is new as well, the 992. I will point out that due to the declining enrollment, we've lost about 253,000 in our title funds. It's, it, having that decline in enrollment is a trickle effect. It's not just LCFF. It's all of your dollars that have, that are funded on any sort of ADA or enrollment will all take a reduction. Just to note, we are not currently settled with GFA or CCA for 2122. So all of the reserve amounts you see and, and expenses you see don't reflect any sort of salary settlement that may come once that is taken, once that's settled. We also have the increase to minimum wage by the next dollar, $15 an hour, and that's effective January of '22. As Lois said, anyone who's not making $15 an hour by law will need to as of January 1st. We still have the additional cost for staff and services, bringing back students on campus. And that's being mitigated right now by our one-time pandemic, you know, response funding. We're continuing to spend that and address learning loss and safety measures and everything that goes along with COVID testing and all of those things. Last slide. This is something that is, has been in presentations before. It's just the budget reporting cycle. It just kind of shows you the, the, the cycle that we go through. And so back in August, you had your unaudited actuels and your budget revisions that you guys voted on. And so we're here now. We're in December and we're doing the first interim report. And then come January, governor's budget will happen, and then second interim, we'll be able to update our financial picture. Are there any questions from the board?
Um, yes.
Um, yes, but I'm not sure since you knew, like, you might be able to answer. Um, I know a few years back, we as a board then decided that we wanted a certain amount in our reserve. Wes, do you remember this? And was it 10% or were you here, Tom, at the time? And Lois probably remembers, because you know, normal standard is 3%, right? That we need to keep in our reserve. And then you're like, well, we want to, you know, build it up. So when looking here at our reserve numbers, and they look pretty good. Are they within? Do you guys remember what we voted that we wanted?
9%.
Was it 9%?
We, we would try to increase by 1% each year until we reach 9%.
So we're, we're doing okay for now.
Yes, we're beating our, we're meeting our policy, yes.
23, 24, okay. And that's great. I just wanted. So we're talking about, and just, that's good. Thank you.
So the challenge comes when we go over the ADA cliff.
Well, I do want to point out that these reserve levels are also pre-negotiation. So anything negotiation is going to bring these levels down over the course of the years. And then, so just want to point that out.
And do, but do you think we'll be able to maintain the 9%?
Not currently. We'll have to, but you know, it's like we always say, we don't have crystal balls. So we don't know. We could get four more years of super COLA. We could have an explosion in enrollment, you know? And so it's just one of those things where you're always looking at your budget at a point in time. And so at this point in time, the current salary settlements that we're all exploring, no, we would go below the 9% as of right this moment. Second interim, like I said, governor's budget could come. We go get a super COLA next year and the year after, and then it's, it's fine, you know? And so it's just always as a point in time.
No, and thank you for that clarification.
And I think it's important to remember too, and to be transparent with the fact that we have hired a lot of additional staff with these one-time funds. And so when you're looking at those reserve levels, you're, you're looking at it with the additional staff. Will we be able to keep the level of staffing that we have now forever? Once these COVID relief funds are gone, the reality is we might not be able to. So we hired extra staff in all areas, from administration to custodians to yard duties. We hired additional staff.
I do have two questions. The first one, and it's actually on the, the notes in the agenda. And it shows an increase to SALPA of 130,899. And, and I'm just curious, because I know a couple of years back, there was a big reduction in the SALPA because I believe it was in the Thomas left, left that, left the plan area. So my question is, how much is this helping compensate for, for that initial hit we took? When, when that, I think there was maybe even two districts, I think, that left the SALPA. So how's that impacted us overall? And where, where we are, where are we now as opposed to where we were before those, those, those other districts left?
The good thing is that a couple of years ago, when they decided to increase the statewide target rate, it, it really helped. So everyone was getting kind of a base rate that they used to get. And then they decided to make it 625. And then now it's 715. And so that was, that was huge additions to a SALPA as a whole. The other thing is that you do get that prior year protection in the SALPA, the same way that a school district does. So everyone's still riding that. They were, you know, riding out that ADA until, you know, the cliff type thing. But the increase in the rate is helping to mitigate those things. Now, next year, I can't tell you that in your SALPA, when everyone's cliff falls off, you know, that you might see a reduction in funding because I, that calculation's done at the county level. I did that calculation for San Joaquin. And so it would just depend on what theirs looks like right now and how much ADA they're expecting to lose in their SALPA with the declining enrollment. But if they continue to keep giving more money in the base rate, the 715 was yet another bump. So from one year to the other, you went from 625, and now it's 715 this year. So you've got quite an increase in your rate that you would normally not see. You'd normally see just COLA. And so they, they really did a lot to bring more funding to AB602, which is your funding for the, that they're talking about here. It's the main state funding. So really, I would have to take a look at the SALPA calculations on CDE and kind of maybe look for myself just to see, you know, what kind of ADA reduction they might be looking at next year, so.
Okay, that helps. And then the second question real quick, and I think you probably already addressed this. But looking through the report itself, I did see a significant increase for capital expenditures. And I think you said that had to do with, with, with COVID structures, the outdoor structures and stuff like that. So there was a significant amount of money or money that we spent that we had not originally budgeted for or projected. Is that correct?
We have it budgeted now. So we didn't originally have it budgeted. And so in their S or 3 plan, they have, they have shade structures. There was a couple of other things.
A lot of HVAC units. We've used S or, S or 2 and S or 3 for some HVAC unit replacements. So that's why the.
And those items would affect, would affect capital in this. Okay, okay. And then that's fine. I just.
And right now, it's just.
It caught my attention as I was looking through it. So I just, yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
One-time dollars have a way of distorting sometimes too, because you, you don't expect to see something that you see. And so they're currently budgeted right now. And so they could decide, because it is a living document, to then switch course and then change and spend it on something else. And that could be removed from the capital outlay. And so you could see that fluctuate with one-time dollars as they decide how they're going to spend them over the next couple of years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other questions? No? Okay. You know what? If not, then I'll move to approve item 212.260. Do I have a second? I'm sorry.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Gracie.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tom Silva to approve item number 212260, seconded by Grace Molson. Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, 212.261, and that is board consideration of approval of memorandum of understanding between the California School Employees Association and its GOAL chapter number 362, CSEA, and the GJUESD regarding Classified School Employees Summer Assistance Program, CSE, I'm sorry, CSESAP.
All right, thank you. So the state once again allocated significant funds, $50 million to the summer assistance program for our classified staff. I believe this would be the third year that our district would participate in this program. This is kind of a summer savings program. Staff can elect to take 10% out of their check. And we currently have 81 employees that participated this last year, and it is a cost to the district. Currently, based on the 81 participants and what they are withholding for this summer assistance program, it is about $17,000. So we would anticipate if we had about the same participation, because we do have to pay statutory benefits on the match that they receive from the state. So that's where the cost comes in. And so it is a, it's a cost we've had every time that we have asked the board to approve this. But we think it's a good program for classified staff. And we would recommend that while the state is putting these monies aside, matching funds for what our employees would like to save, we would recommend that the board continue for another year.
Any questions? Comments? Then do I have a motion to approve item 212.261?
I'll make the motion to approve 212.261.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Kegel to approve item number 2122, excuse me, 212261, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Grace Molson?
Aye.
Casey Raboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Next item on the agenda then is item 212.262, and that is board consideration of approval of the GJUESD Resolution Number 7, California State Preschool Program, CSPP, Continued Funding Application.
Okay, um, every year at this time, we are required to submit to CDE a funding application for our state preschool program at Fair Sight. And this is the first year that the superintendent is the one that typically authorizes the application. And this year, they're asking that the Board of Trustees vote, you know, the approval for her signature on the application. I wanted to report that there are no programmatic or calendar changes for state preschool in the upcoming year. Of our 11 preschool classrooms at Fair Sight, four of them are funded by California State Preschool Program funds. And it's two full-day classrooms and two part-day classrooms. And the year for preschool is 175 days and approval is recommended. Do you have any questions? I think we've had preschool in our district for probably at least over the 30 years that I've been here. So, and it was well-established when I came. So we're, we're pretty confident that if you do approve it, our application will be approved by CDE one more time.
And I think we're all big fans here, so there's probably not a whole lot of discussion on this issue. So.
Thank you.
Questions? All right, if not, then do I have a motion to approve item 212.262?
I'll make a motion to approve. Wait, your cross off already? No. 212.262.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you. I have a motion from Grace Molson to approve item number 212262, seconded by Casey Raboy. Tom Silva?
Aye.
Wesley Kegel?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, moving on to our first reading of item 212.263. And that is a first reading of the GJUESD Board Policy and Administrative Regulations. Item 1, BP 3516.5 Emergency Schedules. Item 2, BP 4131 Staff Development. Item 3, BP 6120 Response to Instruction and Intervention. Item 4, BP/AR 6164.4 Identification and Evaluation of Individuals for Special Education. Item 5, BP/AR Children with Disabilities Enrolled by Their Parents in Private School. Item 6, BP AR 6164.5 Student Success Teams. And item BP AR 4112.42/42/4312/42. Drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. So what do we need to know about these?
Well, these are all, in these topic areas, we all have current board policy already, or AR administrative regulations. But these items here have been recommended by CSBA. There have been, in most cases, significant changes or updates. Some of our policies are very outdated. And so what we have been doing is taking recommendations from CSBA and trying to bring to the board a few at a time. And that's why we have been bringing so many to the board the last couple of months. We're trying to get updated. We staff have looked at all of these policies and we are recommending the changes that CSBA is recommending as well. There was only one minor change that we did make after contacting the state and CDE with the board policy related to the drug and alcohol testing for school bus drivers. So that you would see it as in red. It's the very last page, but we do need to change. CSBA language was an alcohol test with concentration of .02. And we need to change that to, you'll see in red, we changed that to, it should be .01. But that's the only change that we made after looking through these policies from CSBA's recommendation. I think the .02 was a federal limit, and we need, we needed to change it to a state limit of .01. And I know Cleo and Donna, Donna Whitlock and Cleo Del Toro Anguiano have carefully looked through these policies as well. I don't know if you have specific questions related to, to any of them and their, and their topics or areas.
I would just like to add, you know, that, Lois, what you said, some of them, especially when it's related to our response to instruction intervention, SSTs and special education, they hadn't been updated in so long, 2009, in some cases, 2008, that it was updated to include some of the new ed code.
That was actually the only one I was going to ask you about was item 4. So thank you for answering that, obviously. Folks who know me know that special education is near and dear to my heart, so I appreciate the updates on that. Any other questions or comments on this first reading? Okay. And if not, we'll move back to item. We will now move on to item F, Reports. And we will go back to the front of the agenda towards, oh, cap goal one, item one, dual, dual-language immersion, DLI survey.
Okay, this is a kind of a summarizing the work, some of the work we've been doing this fall. And do you have the, is the presentation up? Perfect. In your board packet, you have several different items. The first one is the actual, the PowerPoint that I'm going to present, which is a summary of the Dual Immersion Survey. The second item that you have is the Dual Language Immersion Feasibility Study. It has a little bit more information than just the PowerPoint. It goes into a little more detail. If you have any questions on that. Then I also included in the board packet, an EdSource, a new EdSource article, "California Bilingual Programs Ready to Grow After Slowing During Pandemic." It's really an interesting read about just kind of the state and of things in California. Now, as we kind of get back on track with student learning and dual-language immersion programs. And then there was just one other one. It says myth versus fact. The bilingual language development kind of talks about some of the, some of the things that mean, you know, that maybe assumed that are true, but some, and those that are facts. So I will start with our, let me see, I've got so much sitting in front of me. Hold on a moment. Okay, we'll start on page one. The Dual Language Immersion Survey, it's the overview. Just a few things to point out that was also in the reports. Since 2016, there's been a rise in dual-language immersion programs in all of California. And as I reported to the board a few months ago, the Global California 2030 Initiative, our governor has the goal to enroll at least 50% of all of our K-12 students in programs that lead to proficiency in two or more languages by, by the year 2030. And according to the EdSource article that I had just mentioned, in 2018-19, right before the pandemic, 1,490 California schools reported having a bilingual or multilingual program, and that included 747 dual-language immersion programs. And so in a, in a dual-language immersion program, for example, if it's in Spanish and English, a program such as this is for both English-only speakers and Spanish, native Spanish speakers. And the instruction begins in the primary language and for all subjects. And it's increasing with the percentage of English each year. So for example, in kindergarten, the students may be receiving instruction in the target language would be Spanish 90% of the time. And then the following year, 80, 70, 60, 50%, until it's 50-50 in English and Spanish. With the goal becoming, by the time that they leave in eighth grade, they would be completely proficient in both languages. GOAL Elementary School District has a long-established transitional bilingual program at Valley Oaks for Spanish-speaking students in TK3. It's considered an early exit program where they're learning just enough Spanish that they can stay up with their, with their academics while they're learning English. In the past, we've had bilingual programs of this type at Fair Sight, River Oaks, and it, as well as Valley Oaks. And the preparation that you were going to talk about for considering a dual-immersion program in our school district is we have. is we have formed a leadership committee this fall at the district level. And we've hired a consultant from our California Association for Bilingual Education, who's providing professional development. And I'm really excited to announce that we have dual immersion program visits set up just about monthly. Over the, we started in October and every month, we're going to visit different established dual immersion programs. Our administrators and our teachers. And finally, 458 staff members and parents completed the DLI survey that was sent out in October. So, if we go on to student demographics, which is important, we have 1,070 students in our school district that have a primary or home language other than English. Of those, of the language groups, 96% of our second language learners speak Spanish. But it's really notable that there are 15 other languages in our district that comprise that other 4%. Changing over, you know, since the last 30 years, when, you know, when I first came to Galt, I believe we, was almost like 99%, you know, Spanish-speaking. So, and the other thing that's notable is that Valley Oaks has 37% of the Spanish-dominated students in the elementary school. And anytime, if you have any questions, just stop me. The second part was the Spanish staff that are authorized, Spanish-speaking staff that are authorized to teach in a, in a bilingual program. It's called BECLAD, Bilingual Cross-Cultural Language and Academic Development. You can see here the schools and where we have our staff members. We have currently 15 teachers that hold their BECLAD credential. 13 of those teachers have experience in the past teaching in a bilingual program. Proud to say that we have three administrators that also have served in, in bilingual program, or BECLAD. And four of our preschool teachers are bilingual, but they have child development permits. Okay. Moving on to the actual survey.
Just, 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 just to be clear though, so BECLAD is, is a certification unto itself?
Thank, yes, it is. You know, you have your multiple subject, you have your credential. But in order to be, the authorization to teach in Spanish, you need to have a BECLAD, or it's also called bilingual authorization. So, 15 of our teachers do have that bilingual authorization.
And then is there like an ongoing recertification you have to do to maintain that?
No, there isn't. No, it's just, you know, part of the coursework. But I do believe now in the credentialing program, Cleo, that when they leave the credentialing program, it's actually part of the program. If they take, if they, they go through that part.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry.
So, 287 parents completed the survey. There we go. 218 parents completed the survey in English and 69 completed it in Spanish. And if you look at this, the pie chart, you can see that was pretty evenly distributed throughout the district and the schools. So, I felt that we had good participation. There were essentially just five questions that we asked parents in the survey. The first one had to do with them listing some of the potential benefits of providing a dual language program. The second one was what might prevent you from enrolling your child in a dual immersion program? The third one was, do you believe becoming bilingual and biliterate is important for children? Number four was, are you in favor of establishing a dual immersion program in the district? And number five, would you consider your enrolling your own child in a dual immersion program? Thank you. And under the potential benefits, you can see that we chose the top, top six responses. And on between 80 and 90% of the families in both languages, blue being the responses of families in English and orange being the responses in Spanish, that becoming bilingual was clearly important to the majority of the families. Running a close second to that was the expanding the learning opportunities and expanding employment and increasing communication skills. They, just to note, families could also elect to choose more than one benefit. It wasn't just a, you know, you choose one. So, they chose multiple benefits, many of them. On the next page, it's possible barriers to enrolling my child in the dual immersion program. Of our Spanish, Spanish responses, over 80%, there were no perceived barriers. Forty, over 45% of our English responses said there were no perceived barriers. It's interesting because for parents, it was more logistically, kind of about the school and getting their kids to school. For example, a little under 20%, we thought, you know, if you prefer your child to attend a specific school, maybe right next to you, in your, in your neighborhood. Or if you have one child in a dual immersion program, you'd want your siblings to attend the same school. Transportation issues could be, you know, could be an issue if you live on one side of the freeway and the programs on another side of the freeway, they were concerned about getting their kids to school. And, and there were a number, a little over 10% of the English surveys were kind of unsure about their ability to support their child in a, in a Spanish program.
Hey, real quick then, what kind of supports would we have for the parents that, that, that might feel like they're struggling to support their child in a DLI? Is, is, would there be opportunities to help the parents?
You know, that's interesting because that's one of the suggestions that we, we saw in one of the surveys, on some of the surveys, where the idea of, but parent involvement is going, would be very extremely important. It does take a lot of parent involvement in the program. But also being able to offer those parents some type of a Spanish language development as well would be a good idea. So that parents can, you know, kind of learn along with their, with their child, especially if we were to begin the program in preschool or TK informally. But definitely, parent involvement was, is going to be a really important component of it. The next two pages, the first one is the parent surveys in English and then separated out by the parent surveys in Spanish. But the three pie charts that you see on this survey, bilingualism is important for children, over 88% said yes. In favor of establishing a DLI program, 83.5% of our parents are in favor of establishing a program. And 78% would, would consider enrolling their child in a DLI program. And for our families whose primary language is Spanish, on the next page, 100% said bilingualism is important, not, and to their children. 96% in favor of a DLI program. And 96% would consider enrolling their own child in the DLI program. See, the last part of the, of the survey, we also surveyed 171 staff members. And you can see on the, the pie graph that pretty much the responses were, were pretty much distributed throughout our school district. The 2% is maintenance and transportation, which there are quite, you know, fewer employees. And the district office, I believe, was 7%. But the rest of the schools were, were pretty close. So, it was 171 staff members. The questions on the next page were similar to the parents. The potential benefits being question number one. Potential challenges for question number two. But something a little bit different on question number three, it asked staff members, what are some potential solutions that you might have to the challenges that they, they identified? Then they did ask if they thought their families at their school would be interested in enrolling their children. And they, and then they said, would you support a DLI program at your own school? So, in this, for the staff, 65, a little over 65% said that they do feel that there's family interest for a DLI program at their school. 70% of the staff said they would support a dual immersion program in their school. The benefits of starting a DLI program were really mirrored what the parents had said also. Becoming bilingual was the, was one of the most important benefits noted. Expanded learning opportunities, again, future employment. Promoting cultural awareness was noted for our staff and then increased communication skills. And then one of the other ones was building a positive identity and connectiveness to culture. Okay, challenges of starting a DLI program. Whereas parents kind of more focused on just the, the program, I mean, the programmatic, but the logistics and, and that type, our staff really did focus on programmatic challenges that might arise. 60% were concerned that there could be too few BECLAD teachers authorized to teach the program. 47% feared lack of training to teach Spanish. 42% were concerned that maybe not enough English-speaking students would enroll in a DLI program. And there is also a concern that maybe English-only teachers would lose their job to a bilingual teacher if there was a BE, a dual immersion program. And then the last one was a lack of family engagement, just the concern, you know, it does take a lot of parent participation. I won't read through all of the potential solutions that, that we have here, but I did group them. And these are the actual solutions I, that staff did propose. Many of them were, you know, there were multiple, multiple of the same answers, but I just wrote them one time. So, under the staffing and recruitment, some notable solutions were to be to place the DLI program in a site that has the bilingual staff to support it. For example, at Valley Oaks, we already currently have staff that are teaching Spanish and teaching in a bilingual program. Another solution would be to create a DLI strand, like, so for example, at the school, rather than we, rather than just replacing some of the, of the classrooms at the grade level, start a new strand on top of that, so you would be adding a dual immersion classroom to the grade level. And then offering the positions to current bilingual staff members first. Outreach to school and community, they really felt it, it would be critical to start promoting a DLI program early to the entire school and community and holding informational meetings and events and involve the parents in recruiting. I would like to say that we have presented the survey's results to our district English learner advisory committee, our district advisory committee, and our special education advisory committees. They had a chance to kind of weigh in on this. Just in logistics and funding on the next page, something like, like I mentioned, we visiting multiple established DLI schools. And the schools that we are visiting, they're giving us a lot of feedback. They're sharing their enrollment packets with us. They're sharing their master plans so that we would have something to model our program after. Starting small, they, they suggested with one school, a strand within a school. Beginning the DLI program at Fair Sight in a pre-kindergarten, then growing it into an elementary school. And starting the program at a school with the highest percentage of Spanish-speaking students. So, those were some solutions that they, that they thought of. The next page just kind of looks at our dual immersion resources. Because we are fortunate to have a bilingual program, we already do have our language arts materials in Spanish. Mathematics program is Eureka, and that is available in Spanish. Social studies in the lower grades are integrated into language arts. And it's Houghton Mifflin in the upper grades. The map assessment that, and the district reading assessment are both available in Spanish, so we would have the assessments available. Science, though, we would need to have Spanish translations because all of our science or lesson sequences are, are, were created by our, our teachers. And then the last page, just so some of the professional learning that we have, we are providing ongoing. Turn it over to you for questions you might have. But in closing, the feasibility report demonstrates positive school-community interest, sufficient staffing for initial implementation, and we do currently have adequate resources. And kind of like to get your feedback and maybe some, you know, some questions you may have or some next steps.
Would it be possible for us to go when you do visit some of the programs?
Oh, absolutely. I would, you know what, I will make sure. We have a draft schedule. Our next visit's going to be in Davis in, on June, January the 12th. But we also have a visit coming up on February 2nd in Robla, who has an established program. And San Juan Unified has a school that's a dual immersion school, and that we are also. So, I will get those dates out to you as they come. And I think it would be, would be fabulous if you were able to, to go. I know that our superintendent is planning on, Cleo is, and our site administrators are planning on participating as well. There's a lot of information. I was really, I, I just want to say to our public that, that's here, just really grateful for the amount of parents and staff members that did complete the survey.
It's always very hopeful.
The Google surveys, I think they're used to completing them a lot, you know, online. Any other questions or, you know, comments, or even maybe, do you have some ideas of challenges that you, that you may be aware of?
Well, I mean, I think you hit on the one, you know, just challenges that, you know, strictly English-speaking parents might, you know, feel that they're unable to support. So, I think that might be a challenge, you know, that obviously, you know, we can address and find ways to support them. And, and, and when you go to talk to these other schools and observe those programs, those would be good questions to ask is specifically, what are the challenges for the parents and the children coming from the English-only, you know, households? And how are they able to adapt and, and the support? Because the other thing that, to me, sounds kind of daunting is the amount of, of like, like if my child, you know, comes from an English-speaking only house. And when they start out and the instruction is 90% in Spanish, you know, is my child going to struggle? So, I think as a parent, that would be something that I would want kind of, you know, reassurances on, is like, okay, how do we adapt to that? How do we accommodate that? So that there really is that, that dual immersion. Because it almost feels like you're diving in the deep end right from the start. So, so I think that's a question that I think parents would probably want to ask and would probably want to, want to know, how does that work? And what are the, you know, how, how does the, I guess, obviously, it's working. So, what are they, you know, what are the schools where it works? How do they, you know, how do they accommodate that?
I appreciate that question. That's going to be really important as we, as we visit those sites. That'll be an important question to ask. And as we look at their plan, like I said, parent involvement's going to be extremely important. And I do know that the DLI programs that we have in Sac County and in Alodai, they all have waiting lists. Some of the waiting lists are as long as the enrollment. And the two schools that are, that currently, Natomas Unified and Elk Grove do not have DLI programs. And they're planning on launching next year, I believe. Natomas is launching an entire school, a dual immersion school, I believe, in the next year or so. So, it's something that we're coming into our own, and just even in Sacramento County. Yeah, we'll keep you updated. Superintendent, did you have anything to add to that or next steps?
Just, I thank you, Donna, for your leadership in this area and our parents and our staff that have taken the surveys. And also our bilingual administrators and teachers that have been serving on the leadership team with us. They've already started a few site visits. We have a lot of teachers that are going to Saturday trainings through Cabe. We just, I think we have the staff support there as well and, and the parental support. So, looking forward to visiting some, some sites as well in January and February.
I have a question, and maybe I'm jumping the gun. So, you know, like Tom was saying, with, you know, English-speaking parents with their child going into, you know, a dual immersion. I'm just curious about high school foreign language requirements.
For the high schools, the foreign language?
Like, so, you know, like, you know, if we start young with our English, you know, speaking students that are in dual immersion, who become bilingual?
They're going to need to have a program.
So, so in high school, are they done? Or are they gonna, they, high school's only Spanish and German?
They will continue even in high school. And they have, the seal of biliteracy is a, is a state seal. And Galt High currently offers the state seal of biliteracy. I probably imagine that that, many of those students are bilingual, you know, Spanish speakers. But as our program does continue to move up into the, into the grade levels, for example, we're going to really need, it's going to be critical to work with the high school district so that the so that the high school district can plan years in advance to continue to offer those programs. So that it is actually a really critical step in the high school. You know, when we do get into the real planning and opening stages, the high school has to be involved in that.
Thank you.
Excellent question.
I did also want to just add, though, that we really do hope to start having parent meetings and informational meetings in January to give parents who are interested. I believe we had fifty to sixty percent of the families said that they would be interested in attending meetings. So we will be contacting those parents. We have, they left their names and phone numbers. And we will be inviting them to some informational meetings to, to get their feedback and give them more information.
Well, and one thing just, I mean, in general, I've always been curious about is, you know, I know other countries and maybe even other states, I don't know because they don't keep up on current requirements in other states. But, you know, starting, you know, the, the foreign language, like in the middle school, you know, like, I know some is sixth, seventh, eighth, it's considered middle school. Ours here is seventh, eighth, you know, and starting, you know, the foreign language requirements then. So then there's, you know, because then they go into high school, it's a little easier. Because, I mean, it's well-known, children are sponges and they really soak up the information. And then when you get, I mean, I took sign language in college and I cannot even tell you. I remember bubble gum, that's like, one of the only I remember from sign language from twenty years ago. You know, because you don't soak it in as well as you do when you're younger. So even starting foreign language at, you know, the middle school level and then, you know, continuing into the high school level.
I started in middle school, but I know that we are exploring, beginning to offer Spanish as an elective at our middle school next year.
And I think that's great. It kind of gives them a head start in their little, you know, their sponge brains.
Earlier.
Yeah.
I was going to ask you about that. So thanks for answering that question, too.
Yeah, so we're gonna start recruiting.
Starting to offer in McCaffrey.
Lois, I know that, do you have an update on that?
Yes, we've been talking about that. And we met today's cabinet and already starting to plan January and February, February, what we need to do to start posting for staffing. And I have talked with Principal Ron Raymer about it as well. And Tina Hamdus, Assistant Principal, that we do want to offer a foreign language, at least Spanish. So we'll be actively recruiting a teacher for that.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on item one? Okay, then if not, we'll go ahead and move on to item two reports, district reading assessment, DRA data.
Thank you. So you've heard Donna talk about biliteracy and Lois talk to us about board policy. Nicole talked to us about budget. Everything really boils down to us being able to teach children how to read. Everything we do has to do with lives. There's a quote that I would like Tom to read, please. On, yes, that page.
It's going to be a test. So the, the one in blue or the one in white? The first one here?
Yes, the fundamental.
Okay, so it says, "The most fundamental responsibility of schools is teaching students to read."
Keep going.
Continue again. "Because reading affects all other academic achievements and is associated with social, emotional, economic, and physical health."
Thank you. And the reason I, I wanted Tom to read that is, for the word emotional, I want you to know that last week I was talking to an old friend, he's fifty-six. We started talking about school and started talking about reading. And as soon as I started talking about reading, his eyes got watery. And I kind of looked at him, again, he's an old friend, and I said, "What's wrong?" And he said, "I never really learned how to read. And every year was a struggle and no one could figure out how to help me." He's fifty-six. So fifty years later, the thought of reading caused pain. And that really got me thinking about our responsibility to ensure that all children learn how to read before they leave our district. So with that, on the next page, I want you to know that we follow a reading model. The reading model that we follow, you have seen this visual before, it's the reading rope. Basically, it states that decoding skills and language skills will give you skilled readers. We are lucky in our district that we have very strong materials curriculum. Our benchmark program supports the, the strand of language comprehension. And our SIPs program assists with the strand of word recognition. Our assessments, our DRA, district reading assessments, our common assessments assist with progress monitoring. On the next page. Do you know that our district reading assessments or DRAs, they are administered starting in preschool up to grade six. But for the purposes of this data report, we're only going to focus right now on TK three. The DRA is diagnostic in nature, meaning that it really does provide us with specific information on what skills, what reading skills. Students know and which ones they don't know. It helps us look at the type of errors that they're making. And for us to try to figure out, you know, how is that affecting reading comprehension? Now, you might think, okay, so you get results, you know what they need, you know, you provide them what they need. It is really not that easy. Teaching a child to read is not an easy task. Learning to read is not natural. Speaking is. But the brain is not automatically, doesn't automatically learn how to read, print, internalize that into a word, and then make meaning of that. Children have to be taught how to do that. And not all children learn the same way. But I do want you to know that all of our teachers at every grade level, they, we consider them reading teachers. Because again, the fundamental responsibility we have is to ensure that everyone read and read at grade level. And I don't want to say at the end of third grade, which is, I know, something that you hear often. I want children to be at grade level each year. If we wait until third grade, it might be too late for some. So children should be reading at their target rate every year. And for the DRA purposes, at the end of every grading period, which is every trimester. On the next slide. As we look at some data, I want us to focus on the strengths. I know that it's sometimes very easy for your eyes to go to the lowest score. I don't want you to do that. I want you to go and, and focus on the highest scores. And I want you to ask yourself the following questions. What strategies might have contributed to these results? What practices are in place to support the reading process? What factors might be considered when there are deep differences between student groups? What might be some barriers slowing down the reading process for some children? And what type of support is needed? On the next slide. This data represents the percent of TK students, TK three students who met all DRA targets. So the district reading assessment has different components. This data shows the percent of children who met all those subgroups or subtests. Something important to highlight is that, for example, if you look at Marengo, the overall number of children, again, TK three, that met all the reading targets is fifty-seven percent. That's the overall. When you look at student groups, I asked that you also look at the student group in reference to the overall. So if you look at the white student group, they are above the overall of fifty-seven percent. If you look at the EL, English learner student group, they are also above the overall. So when you look at student group data, always go back to, are they at or below, above the overall? What I asked Admin to do for us tonight is to briefly talk to us about, what do the numbers mean? Because really looking at numbers, it's the equivalent of just looking at digits, right? Unless you have the background, unless you have the story behind the numbers, then the numbers won't make sense. So what I've asked Admin to do is to join me or come to the podium. And we will, we will start with Marengo and then we'll move to Lake Canyon. And what they're going to do for you, as their data is on the screen, is talk to you about, again, those questions that I, I read to you a few minutes ago. What strategies and factors, how did you get what you got? And how do we do more of that? So we will start with Marengo. Thank you, Leah.
Excellent. Yeah. Okay. So I would say a big, I would talk even district-wide. I'm at two sites. I'm at Marengo and Greer. And I'm going to, can I speak to both? Or you want me to do one at a time? Cleo, may I speak to both Greer and Marengo?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Very similar as far as our PLCs meet every single Wednesday. And at our PLCs, especially TK three, they discuss the reading groups. And they make adjustments based on student needs, whether they need to move up, get adjusted, go to this teacher, go to this IA. And they're modified regularly and weekly to meet the needs of those children. And I can say that happens at both of those sites. With those adjustments made currently this year with SIPs, pacing and expectations, teachers are able to slow down a little bit more and review lesson components. I would also say that teachers look beyond DRAs. And we also look at our MAP data and grades to determine what those students' needs are and what we need to do to support them. When our reading interventions and strategies are not working, we look to our MTSS teams for strategies and we go through that process as well. As students are making growth, if we were to look at the beginning of here to where they are right now, we see tremendous growth, whether they are meeting in our subgroups or not. And even going be above and beyond the overall, they are. And if you take into consideration the pandemic, we see that there's real progress being done with kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. So we'll move to Lake Canyon. Thank you, Judy.
Good evening. And so we've been on quite a journey this year. As you know, in August, we received students. And it had been a long time since they had had full, normal days of school. And so we had a very strategic launch to our school year. Before teachers even came back in August, I invited all of the new teachers who would be teaching SIPs to attend a special training and orientation introducing them to the SIPs curriculum through the Center for Collaborative Classroom, the publisher. In August, all of the teachers in our district, of course, received special PD based around the science of reading. And the teachers then shared that information with their instructional assistants to set the stage for the interventions that they would provide. Also, something big for all of us was ensuring the readiness for learning in that regular school setting, again, for all of our students. And so we kept it Nike simple. We had a one-word mission this year, and that was simply reboot. We purposed, as a Lake Canyon staff, to reboot all of our successful social-emotional learning support systems, our house system, class meetings happening in all the classrooms daily, second step, all of our clubs, lots of campus routines and training, and lots of PLCs across the teacher groups, but also with the yard supervisors and the special education team. So lots of collaboration with staff. We have community volunteers that come in and read with students who are struggling. We have, for example, a service learning dog organization is sending in their, their dog owners and the dogs to read with the kids. So just lots and lots of special programming to focus on supporting our students with learning to read. And also special attention to our English learners with strategic grouping and leveling in their ELD sessions.
Thank you, Judy. We'll move on to Valley Oaks. Gracias, Laura.
Good evening. Laura Matkas from Valley Oaks. And the previous slide, we took the questions that Cleo suggested. What are the positives? What are the strategies and practices that may have contributed to those scores? And so for our school-specific data, we looked at, for our grade level-specific data, sorry, we looked at first grade because they had the highest overall percentage. And then they had three of their five student groups who had higher percentages than the overall. So then we went to the first grade team and asked them directly, "What strategies and practices do you think contributed to these scores?" And one of the things they mentioned is that they started students at SIPs Extension Review Lessons. And that was different than past practices. Past practices were sometimes putting students back ten lessons, which often put them back in beginning, which is the very beginning level of SIPs, beginning level SIPs. But over, with new training and new information, they've changed practices and started them at SIPs Review. And they felt that that really helped students meet benchmarks. And for the handful of students who did need to start at beginning because of where they ended the previous year, those students did not meet benchmarks. So the students who are in SIPs Extension Review had a better chance to meet those first grade benchmarks because they were starting in the first grade program and moving forward. The team, like my colleagues mentioned, collaborate very closely. They are very on top of student progress and make adjustments continuously to their grouping, whether they need to accelerate students or provide more support. And another thing that we did, not just for first grade, but for all of our, our instructional assistants, and we are very lucky to have a large team, is we provided a SIPs refresher training for our IA staff. And that hadn't happened previously for a couple of years. So we reached out to two of our district literacy leads and asked them what kind of support they could provide. And they very generously came and spent two days at our site. The first day, they observed all of the instructional assistance. I gave them a schedule and they went and popped into the different sessions, planned their training, and the next day came back and spent about three hours with our staff. So that was very beneficial because it was very personalized and targeted. And the IAs were able to ask very specific questions. And because the district literacy leads were able to see those things, they were able to say, "Okay, for that student, I would do this. And for this group, you could consider this." And I did notice that. So it was very beneficial that they were there to validate the effective strategies that were already taking place and provide some reminders for correction routines, et cetera. And the feedback that we got from our instructional assistants was that they found it very, very beneficial and very helpful as giving them, you know, updates on, on teaching SIPs. And without them providing the reading instruction for all of our students would be very difficult. So we are very, very grateful to have them there. They're a critical part of our team. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Laura. We'll move on to River Oaks.
Thank you. As I met with each of our grade levels, they were actually a little bit surprised by the data because this data didn't match a lot of the other measurements like our MAP scores, SIPs process, progress, the benchmark data. So we really took this data and, and looked at it not only as a grade level, but drilled down student by student. And with each one of those categories, each one of those subtests for our district reading assessment, to look specifically at what, where the gaps are for each individual learner who didn't make the DRA benchmarks across the board. And that then afforded us the opportunity to be very targeted, very strategic in the supports that we're giving individual students, making sure that those, those specific skills are being targeted in their intervention groups, that they're being invited to participate in our acceleration blocks after school. And really providing opportunities to, to close those, those gaps that students have in their reading learning. You know, our expectation is that by next trimester, our DRA data will be very similar to what we're seeing in MAP and SIPs and benchmark assessments. And that the data will be very reflective of the whole child and the progress they're making. But again, as Cleo said, this is diagnostic in nature. So to have these tools available to us to really look at specific skills that we need to target for each individual student is just exactly what we need to be able to provide the support to our individual learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Leah already shared with us information on Greer. So I did say that this data mostly reflected TK three, but we are a PK eight school district. So I thought it was important to also have Coljeet talk to us about the work at the preschool. And then she will be followed by Tina with some of the work at the middle school. So thank you, Coljeet.
Good evening. I'm Coljeet Najjar. I support the Fairsite Preschool and School Readiness Center. So yes, we, 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 we will have some assessment data that we can share at a future board meeting. But I did want to take this opportunity just to kind of share the work that we have been doing at the preschool to align what we're doing with what is happening at elementary school. Because as the DRA data is showing, reading doesn't just start in kindergarten, it starts early on. So for the past couple of years, we have worked with the preschool teachers to take a deeper dive into our preschool learning foundations, which are our standards, and really having a better understanding of what are those early literacy skills? How are we teaching them? How do they align with what is being presented in the curriculum? Giving the teachers that knowledge base and those foundational skills really helps them be more intentional in their teaching practices. We also looked at and continue to look at the TK expectations because ultimately we have majority of our preschoolers and our TK students all going into kindergarten. And our goal is to provide an equitable learning environment for our preschoolers and TKs, TKers that are going on to kindergarten. As a part of that work, in aligning what we were doing at preschool with TK, we implemented this year more phonological awareness assessments and instruction in addition to more literacy components within their instructional practices. And also looking a little bit more closely around the academic language that was being utilized in preschool. We are, we, 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 we are working with an organization called Be Glad to provide our teachers with some academic language instructional practices. And we have our first coaching session tomorrow, actually. So there's a lot of work that we've kind of put into place. And I'm so proud of my preschool teachers for really kind of taking this task to heart to better prepare our early learners to be successful as they transition onto TK and kindergarten.
Thank you so much, Coljeet. So we will end with Tina. Thank you, Tina.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Tina Hamdus, Assistant Principal at McCaffrey Middle School. So over at McCaffrey, we've been doing a lot of work actually for several years now with our Cali grant. The Cali grant was a literacy schoolwide grant that we had for five years. Last year was our final year of the grant and we were able to take many of the skills and strategies that we were learning about creating a system change from Cali. And we are continuing on, even though the grant is done, the work is still ahead of us, especially with literacy. So taking all of these wonderful teachers across this district and having all of these students, all this DRAs and learning that they've done in all the elementary schools and having them come to McCaffrey where they're no longer learning to read, but they're reading to learn and truly applying those skills every day to understand the content. We need to do some, some work there. And we started currently this school year building out our Cali team, and we call it our literacy team now. And it's truly a PLC-driven collaboration. So through this collaboration, these teachers are broken up between departments. And they are aligning their content by measuring common assessments. So they're all on the same page, they're all in agreement on how they will, or what they will assess. And then they bring together work after the assessment is done. So whether that's monthly, a unit assessment, trimester, or weekly, that is driven by their PLC, their department. And they're bringing the same assessment with them, sampling of different subgroups, special education students, EL students, socioeconomic students, whatever the subgroups may be, they're bringing a sampling of that work. And as teachers, there is a protocol we call the SWAP. It's the Student Work Analysis Protocol. And they are driving that themselves. We've started it, rolling it out to our Language Arts Team. And we are beginning to do that in other departments now, social studies, science, and then eventually we'll be doing it in our math department as well. But this system has actually taken the conversations in those meetings away from looking at just one child or discussing behaviors, but really going back to the strategies of how the teachers are teaching the content and becoming more reflective on their work, much like they do in elementary with, with the diagnostic. What is this telling us? And we're finding themes, we're finding language gaps, we're finding misinformation of students. And so it's driving their instruction and creating a way for them to find what are their next steps. Not making assumptions, but having the actual work in front of them to say, wow, they are getting it. We can move on, or okay, we need to go back. And allowing their peers in their PLC to help guide them as they are all as experts, they're all teachers, and they all have different ways doing those assessments. And leaning on each other to find out better strategies and better techniques to teaching that, that content. So we're excited to see where this takes us this year and looking at other departments, how this will look.
Thank you, Tina. So board, you heard everything from grouping, looking at the MTSS model, you heard the word reboot. You heard a strong PLC collaboration, you've heard the re reconsideration of placement of children at the beginning of the year in SIPs. You heard IA training. You heard the importance of looking at multiple assessment points, invitations to acceleration blocks, the intentional work with PK standards, intentional work with academic language, strong literacy team, and the SWAP analyzing student work to see what strategies were the most effective and what students need. Any comments, any thoughts before our admin team takes a seat?
Question. How much learning loss was there during COVID? And then other question would be, how fast have these students, since they've been in the classroom, have regained that confidence, have regained and have caught back up? And maybe some of them even got further along than they were since they've been back in the classroom?
Thank you, Donna.
That's okay. You know, that's really hard to measure because it depends on the individual. We've noticed patterns, students that were successful prior to the pandemic seemed to do well. And for a variety of reasons, they might have the support at home. They just have this, a stronger skill set to begin with. So they were successful during distance learning. For some students, they just really thrived in that environment. That, that virtual learning was really appropriate for them. For others, it was really hard. So it, it's really hard to say, but we're all making an effort to meet students where they are when they come back. And with all of the supports that we have in place, we are seeing students start to catch up. We focused, I think, I, I think I can safely speak for the, the entire district. But when students returned last spring and then again this fall, we really focused on that social emotional piece, on getting students to feel comfortable and confident back as learners in school. And it required a lot of retraining. They had forgotten what it was like to be a student in that environment. So we've spent a lot of time trying to do that, to build that. Because we know that if they're not in an emotional place and ready to learn, that no matter how wonderful our lessons are or how strategic we are with interventions, they're not gonna make the growth we would hope. So we're really focusing on that. And I think we're all seeing growth. And so it's just, it's gonna take time. And it's gonna take a little bit of time for some students and it's gonna take a lot of time for other students. But again, we're continuing to look at it on a student by student basis. We're looking at the strategies that we're using and the best way to support learners.
Thank you, Donna. And Wes, I'm gonna add to that. And although I don't have the data to back up what I'm going to say, I do think it made a difference. I think two things made a difference with student achievement. The, the fact that we have the AMPM, I think really helped children maintain a certain level of reading skills. Because remember, the whole purpose of us moving to an AMPM model was to ensure that all children receive reading instruction daily. It was a shorter period of time, but it was consistent. The second one is the summer school acceleration program that we offered. I think those two things combined are giving us the scores that you have in front of you. And although they may not be, again, if, if we, if we take a step aside, they may not be where we want them to be for certain student groups. They're not as low as we anticipated. So the, the staff is doing an, an awesome job of trying to fill in the gaps, trying to identify where the need is and filling in the gaps as they go. Our admin team hasn't stopped. I mean, they look at data and, and they look at multiple sources of data to make sure the scores look accurate. Do we think these are valid? So I, again, I, I don't have the data to back it up, Wes, but I think it was the AMPM model and the summer school model that possibly allowed us to have a smoother journey with reading. But you definitely have a very strong administrative team serving you, serving the children. They have made a huge impact on children.
I, I can share a little bit of data. We did look at the MAP data for students that attended the summer program. And at all of the school sites, over 50% of the students that attended the summer program met their MAP growth goals. They made, they made growth from when they took it last spring to, to fall. So that's positive. I think that definitely the summer program did help.
Gracie, you were gonna make?
Um, I have a question. I know I've asked this before and so I'm probably at a broken record. But I know like some schools use AR program. Some schools, I can't remember. So sorry, that is it Lexi, Lexi, Lexia? Is clever another one for reading or is it, I, I, I don't know, because I'm very familiar with AR. But I do know that other schools use different reading programs. And I know it's based on, you know, the funds that they get, they can use those funds for what program they use. But is there any correlation between one program being better than the other, just based off of the scores? And why aren't we standardized as to what program is working really well? And has that ever been analyzed? And is there data for that?
We, we haven't analyzed the correlation between the digital platform that students use to practice skills compared to the results. And as far as AR, I think at McCaffrey, Tina, the AR is part of the effort grade. Any thoughts on just correlation to grades? And AR reading?
I can speak for, as far as AR goes, AR is really that individual allowing of that child allowing to be reading their own, at their own level. So taking that book home, it's reading in their free time, it's building that love of reading is, is kind of the purpose behind it. And just building that autonomy where they are at. And there is ways to measure where they are coming in when they come to us. So that's some diagnostic data that we can have because we don't have DRA data. And then we also have, as far as effort goes, in, in Language Arts, that is part of their, their reading grade. So we use it as a way of showing, okay, you're practicing these skills, these language skills in class, but you can practice them in your own way. Now we're gonna look at main idea in details with your book. Give us a main idea in chap, in your chapter here today and some details. And maybe that's a, an application. So they're reading things at their, on, at their own level. But they're practicing a skill that's a standard, a, a grade level standard, for example. So those could be ways teachers practice that and integrate that into their grades and reading. We incorporate AR as part of our Renaissance. So Renaissance has AR embedded in that. I know you're, you're familiar with that. If you've had your child go through McCaffrey. So AR for us has been a great tool of helping students just develop that individual reading.
Thank you, Tina. And with that, Gracie, I'm, I think we only partially answered your question. Do we have direct data? We do not. But there's recent research about the digital platforms and, and the amount of student engagement or the lack of. You know, reading a book online is not the same as reading a book that you have right in front of you. There's no engagement with an iPad. Children that are learning to read have a hard time thinking, okay, I, I think I read this about the setting, but they don't know where. They, they can't keep track of where in the text they read that information versus a book, right? They can say about three pages behind or in the front of the book is when I read something about the setting and were learning, and I think Coljeet was listening to the same podcast that I was. Coljeet, do you want to add anything with the digital information that you and I were discussing? Because it is a good question, Gracie, as far as tools, but also the, the platform.
Well, and just really quick, because what, because I'm just looking at the numbers, because I'm very familiar with AR. Because Edna Brooks in McCaffrey, AR was the, the platform. And it was never, like, the tests were digital, but I mean, there was always a physical book that needed to be read. And then I'm looking at like Merango's scores. And so I'm just wondering, I mean, and I don't know what platform unfortunately Merango uses. And so I'm wondering, do they use AR? Like, is there, like, so that's where I'm like trying to see where this correlation, because that's also
So just overall, yeah.
You know, and building upon them.
Got an answer. So what, the data that you're seeing is not AR related at all. AR is built on independent reading. For reading comprehension, what you're seeing is like phonemic awareness, word recognition.
But it's still reading.
It's skills to learn to read.
I'm really confused.
It's the skills that you learn to read and decode a word in order to become a fluent reader, is what you're seeing. AR is meant for reading comprehension. It's that you're reading something at your own reading level to understand the book. Very different.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that.
So that wrote, kind of. DRA is that bottom part where it's the word recognition in order to get to the top of reading comprehension and putting the two together over time. So when they learn to read, they're sounding out words, blending words. That's what DRA is. And then it's also reading passages at certain grade levels to see now what can they do with, with the word recognition to read a sentence. It's not comprehension based.
Right.
And I think, Gracie, you're just trying to find out, are there any platforms that could have affected those scores?
Correct.
Yeah, I think we can, we can probably ask admin a different time and get you information on that. I would like to finish the last two slides. So district-wide action. Thank you, team, very much. When we met last week as an admin team, we did reach consensus on providing teachers feedback on three specific strategies that we feel can make a difference in the classroom. These are research-based strategies. The first one is setting the purpose for reading, meaning that before we ask children to read or listen to an audio tape, we would share with the children, hey, I want you to listen to the descriptive words being used in regards to the study. So there's always a purpose for listening, a purpose for doing a task. The second one is opportunities for student discourse. We find, again, as I said earlier, talking is natural, reading is not. So the more opportunities children have to talk, to talk about the text that they read and whether they agree with the author or not, the greater the interpretation of the text and therefore the greater meaning. Children will create more meaning of the text if they have an opportunity to talk. And then ongoing formative assessments, when you hear the word formative, think of informing. So we're asking teachers to do quick assessments to inform them right away of whether the children are with them or not, whether their children are understanding the lesson or not. So formative assessments. On the next page, the takeaways to On the next page, the takeaways to end the presentation today. Reading is dependent on oral language. I'm going to say that again because it's that important. Reading is dependent on oral language. So children need both word knowledge and world knowledge. Meaning for parents, the more they read to their child, the greater the word knowledge will, um, become. The importance of using complex sentences and complete thoughts. So rather than put the ball over there, it could be, can you grab the ball, place it in the basket next to the closet? Because the more parents talk at home, the more children will build their language, which means the reading process will be a little easier. And then using precise language, I think that's probably an area that most of our EL struggle with. I as an adult EL learner still struggle at my level with the use of precise language. An example that I can give you is that, I think it was last year, I said something about, yeah, we received a bill for a program. And someone said, what, what, what bill, Cleo? I said, well, this bill that I received. And she said, it's an invoice. And I thought, okay, I knew the word invoice, but it wasn't part of my automatic vocabulary because I just, I used the word bill. So my point is that the more language children have, the greater or the smoother the learning to read process will become. So with that, any thoughts, questions or comments?
Well, that was quite a bit to digest. So. Now, if there's no other questions or comments, then, um, I just want to read this one more time because I think that's, that's really, that really is important. But it says, right, the most fundamental responsibility of schools is teaching students to read. So thank you for starting that report with that. I thought that was excellent. I just thought, probably, maybe we should finish with that. Um, any other questions concerning this item?
I just wanted to thank Cleo for your report and our administrators too for sharing your best practices. And then our teachers, they're doing great things in the classrooms. And I, I think we're going to see a lot of growth at second trimester with this reading data.
Okay, we'll move on to LCAP goal two, item one, transportation.
We have Carrie Gardner here tonight with us, our supervisor of transportation, both for the elementary district and the high school district. As you know, we are a joint group together and she has a PowerPoint for you tonight just to give you some updates on how transportation is going in both districts.
Good evening, board trustees, superintendent Yon and cabinet members. I want to thank you first and foremost for giving me an opportunity to kind of highlight our transportation program and just kind of let you know what we've been up to. So I figured we'd start with talking a little bit about our team. Our team consists of four office staff members. We have fourteen bus drivers, four bus monitors, two mechanics. And then let's talk about our students and routes. The elementary district, we're currently operating for general education routes, two special needs routes, and we're transporting three hundred and seven students. The high school district, we are up running for general education routes to special needs routes and transporting three hundred and nine students. For a total of twelve routes and transporting about a little over six hundred students. Oh, our electric bus project. I think this project has been underway for two to three years. I know that it was well underway when I began working with the district. We have been making slow progress slowly. Um, I think the pandemic has definitely impacted this project. Each district will receive one bus. So we will have two buses that will be operating in Gault. Uh, the buses, we were, I'm happy to share with you that we did order them June first. We were expecting delivery of the buses in December. Well, we're in December and guess what? No buses yet. So it has been delayed due to, of course, the supply and demand issues that we're having as well as the workforce. Uh, we're still waiting for the finalized charging infrastructure contract from the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District to begin the charging infrastructure construction. Um, we will begin with only having two buses. We will have infrastructure put in for a total of six buses to be able to accommodate. Um, we felt that this was important to look ahead. Especially, I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to hear Vice President Harris today. She was talking about electric school buses and gearing more federal funds towards that. So I look forward to possibly being able to increase our electric bus fleet in the future. Driver recruitment, of course, for there's a driver shortage. We have a nationwide driver shortage. Not just in California, it is across the nation. It has been growing over the last so many years, but it seems like the pandemic has really impacted the shortage and the need for good qualified school bus drivers. Did you know that bus drivers must complete twenty hours of classroom instruction? Twenty hours of behind the wheel instruction. Um, they have many tests they must pass with the Department of Motor Vehicles as well as written and driving tests with the California Highway Patrol. That's prior to even obtaining their school bus license. We're now accepting applications for upcoming class that we will have at the end of January. We have four students that are registered. And we have two students that are ready to begin their behind the wheel training. It's a long drawn out process for drivers to obtain their licensing. And we just, every class that we run, I think since I've been with the district for the last year and a half, we've probably ran about four classes. Um, we've had three or four applicants that have completed the process and we welcome them with open, open arms to our team. Traverse expansion, this is something that we also have been talking about for probably about the last year, putting in, working on this expansion. We will have GPS on our buses, something that we do not currently have. We'll have student and medical tracking. The students will use ID cards to scan on and off the buses. And this will, you know, allow us to track the medical billing that I've been working with Stephanie and Donna on that we're, we're hopefully putting into effect this year. We'll be able to notify parents when the buses are running late with just sending like a text message. Parents will have the option to download an app on their phones and they'll receive notifications. I know that that has been a huge concern for parents with both districts not receiving notification when buses are running late. We're hoping that this will help with that. We'll be able to keep our training records electronically. Currently, they're still kept paper and this will expedite a lot of those processes. We'll have electronic route sheets. They'll be on the tablets that will be docked in the buses. And there will be GPS that will talk to the drivers instead of the old school driver holding a route sheet in the hand, trying to read the route sheet and drive the bus. My hope is that we'll be able to reduce costs on printing costs as well for paper use and ink and all of that. We'll be able to utilize these tablets as a time clock as well as for the driver's pre and post trip inspection reporting requirements. Currently, all that is done paper as well. This is, I don't know. Lisa Ostrander has been with the district for thirty-four years and she's retiring. Friday is her last workday with the district. We wish her the very best, but we're going to miss her. She's one of those drivers that comes in every morning. She has a smile on her face. She loves what she does and has just enjoyed her long career with the district. And I definitely wish Lisa the very best in her next chapter. With that, do you have, anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Um, have the mechanics been trained in, uh, working on the electric buses?
They will receive that training. That is, um, part of the contract that we have with the bus vendor when we take delivery.
I just have a quick question and it's okay if you don't know the, the answer because you were talking about the total numbers of routes and stuff. Um, do you, do you also have the data on the total number of miles? Because I remember asking one of the drivers one time, I think she told me she drove like over a hundred and fifty miles a day, which is a lot of mileage on, eh, from behind the wheel of a bus. But do you guys capture that data as far as daily, weekly or annual usage, how many miles total?
We absolutely do track that data and I can forward that information and share it with you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments?
No, just to thank you for being adaptable. Today was a very crazy day. And you weren't sure of what was going to happen. The elementary is getting canceled. I know Liberty got canceled and you guys were on it. And so thank you. You guys are very adaptable and appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a great team.
And send our very best to Lisa. We appreciate that. I mean, thirty-four years, that, uh, it says a lot again about her dedication. I think it says a little bit about how great this district is, is a place to work. So that's just awesome though. But tell her, yes, you know, thank you very much.
Absolutely. I'll be sure to do that.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two then, intramural basketball.
Thank you. Just wanted to quickly highlight and inform the board and our, our public tonight that we've started intramural basketball. We have a sports coordinator at each of our elementary sites. We've started with girls' basketball this month. Well, we started last month, the games are this month. And then in January, we are starting boys' basketball. I was able to attend a game. I think it was on Friday. I attended the Valley Oaks game. It was Valley Oaks and Merango. And we're using the expanded learning funds for transportation. We're, uh, transportation, thank you, Carrie and your team. They're taking the away team over to the home game at the school site. And they're taking them back to the school. Um, we're able to fund referees, stipends for the teachers that are, are, that are serving as coordinators, some supplies, jerseys. Um, but it was, it was really exciting. A lot of parents, a lot of family members, they even brought out the, their mascot, the, the bee halftime and some music. It was, it was really great. And I, I just want to highlight the teachers. So the sports coordinators of Valley Oaks is Tiffany Lawrence and Merango Ranch is David Moore. River Oaks, we started with Heather Swain and that's moving over to Daniel Kettner. Greer is Crystal Vallejo and Lake Canyon is Nikki Godenas, the teachers that have stepped up to do this for us, for the students.
Just think of comment on that. As, uh, I went last Monday to the Merango. I think it was Lake Canyon game at Merango. It was, uh, pretty exciting. There was, uh, there was like a hundred and fifty people in there. It was standing room only all the way around. So it was pretty neat. It was pretty cool. And there was a lot of cheering. Everybody was cheering for each, every, each other and, uh, a lot of sportsmanship. The girls were high, somebody fell down, the girls were helping each other up and everything. So it was very, very nice, very excellent. And there's just so much you can expand on sports wise with this program. So it's a lot of upside to what, to that program.
No more comments? That's a great program. I, I agree. I think that's great to hear that that many parents are showing up and, and supporting it. It's, it definitely validates that, that this was a good decision and a good move for all of us. So what a great opportunity. Okay, we'll move on to other reports then. Item one, California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference. So how was that?
It was, it was great. You know, it was nice to be in person. I, I want to thank Casey Reboy and Tracy Skinner for attending with me down there. There was, I, I put a sample of some of the sessions, lots of breakout sessions. Um, mental health to how to run your board meetings during difficult times from family engagement, um, how to serve your long-term English learners or just some, some great workshops. And I, I, I don't know if either board member would like to highlight anything that stood out to you? Any workshops that you really found valuable? Would you want to go next year?
Yeah, I really enjoyed going. Um, there was so much information. Uh, what I did really like is that most of the breakout sessions, they let you, um, download the PowerPoint because you're taking in so much information. So I have those, um, you know, as resources. I, I think the most, um, the one that really got me was the one on, um, just suicide awareness and what you can do. And I think, you know, obviously with the pandemic and we've seen a rise in that. And so there was definitely some great resources that I was going to go over with Lois and they really talked about going over your board policy because it's something that you want to review and really know. Hopefully you never have to use it, but if you do, that is just, you know, it'll be an emotional time. So you want to know how to proceed and, um, and kind of normalizing the conversation. It was, yeah, it was very interesting. Um, the keynote speaker was amazing on the general session. And so, yeah, I would definitely be interested in going again, learned a lot.
So how about you, Casey? How was it?
Uh, it was wonderful. Um, I, I've learned a tremendous amount. Um, the, the first thing that Tracy and I attended was the new board member orientation. And that was like a full day event. It went over things, um, just how to interpret the budget. Makes it so much easier to finally kind of get some, a knowledge base on that. And, you know, and then the other, uh, two and a half days of the conference was, you know, you, you get to pick the, you know, the sessions that interest you. Um, I did several on, you know, the mental health crisis in the schools, you know, and all the resources available. And, uh, you, and they offer all that, like you said, in a PowerPoint download, you can access it later after the event. So you don't have to scramble and try to write everything down. It, it was just a wonderful learning opportunity. Especially after, you know, a year and a half of COVID. I, I think we all need those extra resources. So.
Well, I certainly agree. At least, you know, I didn't get a chance to go this year, but you know, the previous one that I, I had attended, I really felt was beneficial. You know, I like the fact that you can kind of pick and choose amongst the different symposiums and, and, and really kind of figure out what's, what's an interest to you or something that's maybe important or topical that you really want to get information on. And like you said, you can go get that information. You can sit through that presentation and then you have that opportunity to take that information back and kind of digest it because it's a, a lot to process in just a few short days. But you kind of get it and you kind of, kind of find out what's important to me. You get a chance to learn it. And so I think it's a great opportunity. Hopefully I get a chance to, to, to join you guys again next year. Uh, we'll just have to see, but unfortunately, I, I know my schedule didn't, didn't allocate it this year. Timing is just a little, it's just a week too soon for me typically. Um, but again, great opportunity. I'm glad that you guys were able to go. I think that was terrific. Um, I'm, I'm certainly glad that you, you know, you felt you got something out of it. Likewise, Lois. So, uh, I think that's, that was really good. Any other questions or comments on that?
Thank you for the, for board supporting us to attend.
Okay, then we'll move on to our last report. Item two, proposal COVID nineteen vaccine mandates for schools. We have some, yeah, I see you have some information to share here.
I do. I just, I wanted to share this for, for the board and for our community or our public. I thought this was a really good summary from Capital Advisors. I know there's lots of questions about, about the vaccine mandate. And this is, this article or the summary is not just about the COVID nineteen vaccine, but about the other ten vaccines that are already mandated. And so I thought that they did a great job summarizing this for us. And I, there was just a couple of things I wanted to, to highlight in, in my own little summary here. Um, because there's Because there's so much that's unknown right now and there's a lot that's out of our hands. And we really have to wait until the legislature comes back to session in January to see what next steps. There's really no new information that we have about any of this since the proposal first came out. So just going to share a little bit here. For the state to add the COVID-19 vaccination to the current list of the 10 required vaccinations for students without a personal belief exemption, the legislature and the governor would need to pass a law adding it to this list. The legislature is currently at recess and will not return until January. We're expecting January 3rd. The legal teams expect a legislature to introduce a bill proposing to add the COVID-19 to the list of 10 required vaccinations. However, even if successful, the new law would not take effect until the following January 2023. In order for the bill to take effect before then, it would need a two-third super majority vote in both houses of the legislature. And at this time, it's predicted that would be highly unlikely, given the amount of controversy related to the, the issue, that the bill would be in effect prior to January of 2023. Because the governor had directed the California Department of Public Health to add the COVID-19 vaccine to the required list of vaccinations using what they call the regulatory process. Instead of pursuing legislation, the current law requires both medical and personal belief exemptions to be allowed. So we will see if that changes. Once session is back in and we'll see if, if there is a legislature that introduces a bill to change that. But right now, under the current regulation, the exemptions are still in place for a COVID-19 vaccine should a district enforce that. And I believe we have public comment. I don't know if we want to have a board discussion on this. Again, there's no, no new information. Ms. Bach, how many public comments do we have?
We have two.
Two?
So would you like to go ahead and hear the public comments and then if there's any discussion afterwards, we can go on? So, yeah, so then, yeah, if there's two public comments, we'll go ahead and entertain those now.
Thank you. Our first public comment is from Beck Shala.
Thank you for patiently waiting for us.
I never said thank you before, but thank you and the teachers too. Thank you very much. I just bought this a week ago. It's pliers, linesman, some type of tool, cut wire. So the lady said to me, hey, look, lifetime warranty. Even if you lose your receipt, when I'm 90-year-old, I can still go and get a new one. So for a moment I said, wow, I mean, a piece of metal can rust or anything, yet I have a lifetime warranty without a receipt. And yet the pharmaceutical company says, hey, take this vaccine, put it in your kid, but guess what? Don't look at me, anything happened to you. So a piece of metal warranty, lifetime. Something unknown on my kids, buddy, hey, don't look at me, just be on your own. Just because science said, hey, science said it's okay. Okay, well, science said 20 years ago, don't eat butter, it's bad for you. And people stopped eating butter. I don't know. I buy Time Magazine. Two years ago, there was this big sorry on the front page. I'm sorry, science made a mistake. Butter is good for you. So please start eating butter. So, oh, wow, maybe science is not right. Well, science, well, I'll give you some science. We inhale oxygen to live, exhale carbon dioxide, poison, very bad for you. Thank God for trees that cleaned up for us, give us oxygen. By science, I mean, I didn't boot this sign, somebody did it, some scientist. Children exhale 10 to 20% more carbon dioxide than us. Why? Because their lungs are still building up. So we keep masking our kids. 20% of their carbon dioxide that we get out back in their lungs. All I see is a budget clientele for the pharmaceutical companies 10, 20 years from now. So that's why I refuse to that. And on top of it, I'm going to try to keep it really short. Five months ago with the Olympics, we killed it. Tracks, swimming, everything. Why? Because those athletes, big lungs, because they breathe oxygen all day long. Well, we keep masking our kids. Well, good luck 20 years from now in the Olympics. I think everybody else is going to beat us up. So please, let's keep it up.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Catherine Harper.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. And I was, I couldn't help but just think about the implications on literacy and on, for our English learners. When I think about kind of what's coming down the pike, I mean, you're also talking about ADA and enrollment. And I keep up with California news as much as I can since we're such a huge state. And I see that 34,000 LA Unified kids did not meet LA Unified's deadline to vax, to vax, to vax, be vaccinated by November 30th. That's huge. I mean, that's, it's, I just can't even imagine that number of kids who are now in a weird kind of limbo. And it sounds like it's just going to, they're going to keep kind of kicking the can down the road. They're going to, you know, push that requirement for them to move to distance learning. Because that was the plan, was to move 34,000 kids to distance learning if they weren't going to comply and get vaccinated. We also know that black kids and Hispanic kids are not being vaccinated at the same rates as white kids. Black adults and Hispanic adults are not choosing to be vaccinated at the same rate as well. And, you know, I don't know all of the reasons for that. I have guesses and conjectures and some data. But I, I care about kids beyond my own front door, right? And so to know that their future of in-person education could be severely jeopardized. Their literacy, their English language skills, their social emotional learning could be greatly jeopardized by this mandate getting pushed through and by GALT Unified choosing to, to bar them from in-person education. I'm deeply concerned about that. I love my community. I love my school. My third, my fourth grader attends here at Greer. And I don't want to see the funding and our enrollment just in our, and people pulling their kids out. I don't want to see our, our school system gutted by that. And so I would just encourage you guys again and again. I know I've spoken to some, you know, some of you before by email or in person. Please continue to push back on this. Please, you know, give a strong statement to the governor and to the legislature. Please continue to call Jim Cooper's office. I know I've done that several times. Please continue to pursue those avenues for us because, you know, we're doing it too. But if it comes from a board, I would, I would just encourage you to, to, to know that that is going to have, I think, more of an impact than necessarily all of us individually. We want to know that our board is aware of those issues. I know you guys care about, you know, kids who are disenfranchised, kids who were disenfranchised by distance learning because that happened. But I know you care about that. So please continue. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
There is no further public comment requests.
Are we sure?
I'm sorry, we have one more request.
That's fine. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Hi. I feel like I keep showing up to these meetings, speaking and stating roughly the same things. I'm frustrated as it appears we are not moving in a direction, direction or moving at all. I was pleased at the last meeting that the board suggested a town hall to discuss the issues pertaining to the K through 12 mandate. It was shared that possibly a town hall may not happen due to opposing individuals feeling unsafe or that an informal meeting like this could not, could get out of hand. I find this to be a ludicrous reason not to hold a town hall. We, like you, are members of this community and we can talk to each other respectfully and work on ideas or resolutions towards the K through 12 mandate. I have four requests. One is, I hope that we can hold a town hall. I think it can be done just fine, no problem. Number two, I urge you for an immediate resolution in the strongest language possible towards the K through 12 mandate. The GALT district should have a resolution similar to other districts who are speaking up for their parents and school staff in their community. If not for this, do it because the district will, may not be able to serve and possibly survive if it follows a mandate that kicks students out of their educational experience and forces employees out of a job. Has the board really looked at the numbers? Like if you lost 1,000 students at the elementary level and district-wide, possibly like 100 staff, school staff members? What would that look like? What would be the implications of that? What would the lack of funds from this, many students pulled from the district do to the district? How would a district hire new teachers? It's hard enough to find substitutes right now. We need a resolution based on these things. I think you guys can totally do this. You definitely can write a stronger letter to the, the best vocabulary possible, stronger. That sounded really weird. But anyways, number three, I, I also believe you guys could request an end to the state of emergency. There's no reason why not. You can throw that in there. And as well, I wanted to bring up a fourth thing. Many in our community have great concerns regarding vaccine clinics coming to school grounds during school hours and after-school hours during after-school programs. Hopefully, we all have heard of accidents of children being vaccinated on school grounds without parental consent and the coercion occurring at some locations. The most recent story from this past week was a Los Angeles school where a child was offered pizza to get vaccinated. I want a firm answer from our GALT district stating that you will assure us that clinics will not happen on school grounds during school hours to help prevent a potential accident or coercion from happening. I'd like to hear that our district will do that for us as parents. So if we could potentially have a town hall, resolution towards the K through 12 mandate, request an end to the state of emergency, and no clinics on school grounds would be greatly appreciated. Recently, a quote from a letter from the Clovis School District, they wrote, as they formed a resolution towards the K through 12 mandate, they wrote, "Our students have a right to public education. That right should not be conditioned on the medical decision to receive a vaccine created last year for a disease that is not life-threatening for the overwhelming majority of children." Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do have one more request. I'm sorry, it was sitting over on the table there. Hillary Lyman?
Hi, good evening. I'm a mom of three children who are currently enrolled in this district. One more will be starting kindergarten next year, depending on what, what happens. And I'm here tonight to just say that medical mandates have no place in free society. The COVID vaccine is not just another vaccine on the childhood schedule. The CDC's website says that before a new vaccine is ever given to people, extensive lab testing is done that can take several years. That's just not the case with this one. Once testing is in people begins, it can take several more years before clinical studies are complete and the vaccine is licensed. The safety profile is still being gathered on the COVID vaccine. Equal access to public education regardless of their, their vaccine status is, needs to remain. And parents right now are making their own decisions the best they can with the limited safety information available. And they're doing what they believe to be right for their family. The COVID vaccine is widely available for those who want it and is now available for the children of parents who want their child to have it. We respect the decisions being made for, for children by their parents and we ask the same opportunity to decide for our own. Let's not require our kids to participate in something that we do not know enough about. Our children's bodies are not political gambits. There are other school districts refusing to enforce these unconstitutional mandates. We actually just moved from Eldorado Hills. It's Rescue Unified School District. They have stood up and they've said we will not enforce this. They said that they support parental choice. I ask that GALT joint unions stand up and join the other districts not enforcing the mandate. This nation will only remain the land of the free as long as it is the home of the brave. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes public comment.
Okay. So any comments or discussion from the board regarding anything we've just seen or heard? No?
I know we had thrown the idea around before about doing a survey. Have we looked more or thought more on that? Just to kind of get a better feel for, you know, the district, the parents.
I think a survey is an excellent idea. I think timing is probably important. And I would say like, if you did a survey now versus in January, depending on what the legislature does, that could really, you know, sway people's opinions. So I think for me, it would be more important to have a survey based on what happens in January when the legislature is back in, in session. Because then if they don't take any actions, then we know how to proceed. But if they do start to take an action, then I think it's really important to get that feedback from the parents so that we can include that in any kind of correspondence, you know, whether it's a resolution or another letter that we send forward. Because I really think that come January, we're going to, to definitely need to look at submitting another type of, of letter to follow up on.
I think that's a good idea to do it in January and see, see what happens when they go back in session.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, your mic's not on, but go ahead.
That, when they go back in January, that's going to, that's a lengthy process. You're not going to see anything right away. Because, I mean, these things have to go through multiple committees and hearings. And, I mean, they would be lucky to get anything through by like September.
No, I didn't mean to talk. I think, is that what you're saying?
Well, and again, I think even if it goes to committee and, and, and the public becomes aware that it's an item in committee, people are going to be concerned. And I think at that point, they're going to be voicing opinions. And, and, and so I think that's.
A lot of things that go to committee that never come to be, you know, you know what I'm saying? It's kind of premature.
Well, it could very easily die in committee and that would obviously would change the dynamic of that issue. Because if it does die in committee, then we know that even if the mandate becomes, become, becomes, if the governor's mandate goes through, then we know that the parental choice has been preserved. The parents will still have that right, that, that opportunity for the personal exemptions. And I think that's, that's a huge issue. And if that gets taken away, that's certainly going to be a whole different survey opinion than if it's maintained. And so I think a lot of parents' opinion about what's going to happen is going to be hinging on whether or not that even goes to committee. It's a discussion at all or, or if they attempt to, you know, to, to pass legislation to change that. So I think the timing of that is really going to have a big influence on the opinions. I, you know, as far as I, from what I, the discussions I've had, I think that would really have an impact on the opinions of the parents in this district, one way or the other. So, yeah, you're right. It does. It's a long, slow process and it could very easily just die on the vine. But again, I think if something like when there's sudden news like there was on October 1st, obviously that's very, you know, that's, that's a time when, you know, you can really, if you want to gauge opinion, right, when it's, you know, when it's all over the news, that's a good time to ask that question. You know, how would you respond? How do you feel about these different issues? That, I think, is a great time for a survey. So I think January is kind of wait and see. But, you know, it really does kind of hinge on what the. But, uh, you know, it, it really does kind of hinge on what the, what they do or don't do in January.
I agree that we need to, January be nice. I know we need to start doing something, start coming up, start to have a plan. The surveys, you know, definitely needs to happen. Like I said, we, we got to start coming up with a Plan A, a Plan B. This happens, what we're going to do, this to happen, you know, different scenarios. One of the things that I like about this is it kind of answered the question that we had last meeting about the personal belief exemption. So it's, it's good to see that in there for right now. So, as I know Sacramento Unified had like 75% of their student population did not get vaccinated on time.
That's right. And they do have to allow personal exemption as well right now.
Any other comments on that item? And then pending agenda items?
Mr. Silva?
I'm sorry, yes?
I have a request for a public comment from a remote participant regard, regarding the vaccine mandate.
Well, I don't think we went over 20 minutes just yet. So I think we can go ahead and entertain one more before we, we wrap up this meeting. Are we able to broadcast them on Zoom here and?
We're going to see how that works.
See how this technology works. Okay.
Our public comment is from Amanda. And Amanda, if you're there, you can, should be able to speak now.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Good evening. I'm asking the board tonight to start prioritizing the health and safety of the children in this district. This district has bent over backwards to accommodate parents who refuse to abide by the safety measures put in place to keep our entire community safe and it has come at the expense of our children. A superintendent Yant has said in the past, this district is legally obligated and will abide by any mandate put in place. It's time to stop wasting time and start focusing on the safety and education of our students instead of spending valuable time catering to those who refuse to ensure the safety of our kids and our community. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item I, pending agenda items. District communications, I think that's still a huge issue for us. And, uh, I know we're still looking into that. Is that right superintendent? We're looking into possible solutions there?
We are, yes.
Okay. Anything else? Any of you folks would like to see added to that?
I would like to, uh, possibly look into because come Wednesday is the mask mandate for the, for the whole state again. So with that, I think we might want to do like a, was a hybrid model where the board meets in person and then the other, the rest of the board meeting is on Zoom. So, uh, the, we can follow along with our, with that new state mandate for the near future. Because I don't know how long it's going to last, even though it says the 15th, the next month. We know that that might change.
So that's a motion that, that would have to be an agenda item, wouldn't it?
We would have to, if we would want to hold our meeting, the hybrid with the public in Zoom, we would need to add a resolution to the next meeting. We can do it. We just need to pass the resolution first.
So it couldn't happen before next meeting?
It could. It could happen in the, at the January meeting.
That's what I'm saying. So, so we, yeah, but, but the resolution would not happen before January.
No, no, we would do it at that time.
So, so we can certainly entertain that. If that, if that requirement has not expired by January, we can always, but yeah, we can certainly consider that as a pending agenda item. Anything else? No? Okay. Well, again, thank you all for, you know, being here tonight and, and, you know, surviving the weather to get here. Fortunately, the power stayed on the hill the whole time. So thank you all for bearing with us. We appreciate that very much. And that being said, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much.